Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Here.
At this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment, please.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to remove the request from Roasted Cafe.
Second.
Give me a second.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Public comments. Council, Mayor, good evening. Okay. First of all, I'd like to start out on a good note and a big applause and shout out for the Cadillac Girls volleyball team. Excellent job. Very good. So anyways, and that, so I want to start out with, today's Monday. Okay, we, it took us eight days to have a final result on our nation's election, and we finally got the ballots counted. The House is split Senate, of course, the presidency, but anyway, so it's going to be a little tug of war right there. But what I want to do also is just to compliment our city clerk, Sandra Watson, and the county clerk for the job that they, excellent job that they have done and staying right on top of that. I don't know, can you guys hear me okay? All right, so anyways, we'll get to that. And so anyways, I'm coming tonight before council just to talk about a few things. And I've been coming for over 10 years now or better, and I've been telling them about the growth that the city is experiencing and how were jobs and factories, facilities, et cetera. And now, we're coming down to a problem that we got too many people, we got too much problems with traffic uptown. What are we going to do about it, you know? Hey, give me a park place and a boardwalk, but anyways, the second thing I'd like to talk about real quick, request for a proposal for the study of independent water sewers, et cetera, et cetera. Should the city go out and survey it? It's almost three years and we're going to look at, come springtime, another study, another water increase sewer. You know, if it wasn't for the factories and the facilities, you know, our water, our growth in that, what they're experiencing, the costs, yes, we understand for the pumps, electricity, for the infrastructure sewer, et cetera, it's all going to go up. But they should face mostly the responsibility, but in the paper, you know, the city has passed out a proposal for, request for a water and sewer rate. And by now, after all this time, hey, we know where we're at, so. So along with that, real quick, we should know where we're at on the water. You know, our electric bill, natural gas, fuel, everything's going up, taxes are going up, taxation, so, hey, it's almost Thanksgiving, turkey on every stove and a car in every garage and maybe a new car for Marcus in the future budget, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Lindell, you're three minutes early.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Michael Blackmer. You want the address, too?
Just write it down, please.
As you guys all know, I own a business here in downtown Cadillac, which we sold, but I also own a lot of businesses out Cadillac West, have partners in some and some are my own. And I don't know if you guys realize it, I'm not going to be too good of friends to some of these people in here, they're all, you know, they're all here for a reason. I was in support of the snowmobile to come into town. I think it's a good thing, but I'm not in support of it after I read it and how much money that you guys are going to put into it. I've owned the pines for 13 years next month. How much money have you put into the snowmobiling in Cadillac West? Do you guys realize you own Cadillac West, that we pay taxes, Cadillac West? We don't even get Christmas decorations out Cadillac West. I have to replace my asphalt because of the snowmobiles all the time. Three times I've had to replace asphalt. We don't get city help from that. You guys are asking for a lot of money to bring snowmobiles in the town. I was in favor of that, but I'm not in favor of all the money it's going to cost and what all you guys are going to do to make it so it doesn't ruin, ruin, ruin grass. How about in front of the Lake Cadillac Resort? Do you know what I have to do to replace the grass in front of the Cadillac Resort where our trail goes through? A lot. We don't get no money from the city of Cadillac. And I, when I read this Saturday, it's been bothering me ever since Saturday, I can't believe, you know, I like the ideal snowmobiles coming into town, but I don't like the amount of money. If you're going to put the money in that, why don't you start remembering that we are, if you, if you drive into this Cadillac West, it does say City of Cadillac on it. You guys are forgetting about it. We're always forgotten, and this here, if you approve this, all this money for this snowmobiling, and really, snowmobiling is only a three, maybe a four weekend deal. I'll, I, and don't do anything for us out there, I'll be shocked. It's just, it's just a bad idea. Having snowmobiles, what I've done, I'm a snowmobiler. I snowmobile to the city dock and I go to the Cadillac Party Bar and I walk there. We do it all the time, we take a whole bunch. That's just part of snowmobiling, and it's legal to do that. And I see snowmobiles going across the lake all the time, but again, to pay all this money when we need so much down out to Cadillac West is just unacceptable, in my opinion, as a business owner in Cadillac West. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this where we get off to discuss our opinion, Mike?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Hi, Paul Kurtzman. I just want to comment on the parking situation that possibly could be coming to downtown Cadillac. I'm not 100% up to date on everything, but from what I understand is there's going to be an assessment to the downtown businesses to cover parking or something. My family owns GND Downtown, we have a very large parking lot, used to be a car dealership. Summer taxes, this last bill were 17,000 plus dollars. We don't, my customers don't use Main Street parking. Two businesses across the street from me have their own parking lots. I don't think customers for them use those parking spots either. I feel that the business people downtown already pay their fair share and then some, and to put another assessment on the businesses downtown for this, I'm not in favor of. There has to be a better way, it can't all fall all the time on the people that are trying to operate businesses downtown. With that being said, I hope that we can find a better, a better situation, a better result to fix this. And if that means parking meters, then that means parking meters, but it shouldn't just fall on the people that happen to own a building downtown, especially when several of us have parking lots and all of us already pay taxes, two, in my opinion, should be covering most of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin Dubrovic, 406 East Chapin. I also want to speak about the special assessment for the parking. In my opinion, the special assessment really should be for special projects, not a yearly continuous revenue stream. I just wanted to reiterate what Paul said, there are businesses downtown that have their own parking and they're paying a lot of money to maintain that parking. And an assessment, you know, of a few hundred dollars for a small business could mean the end of that small business in downtown Cadillac. And there was an article in the Cadillac News saying that the, that the theater was going to be assessed over $10,000. And, you know, to me, if you want an invitation for a business like that to leave Cadillac and go to one of the townships surrounding, that would, that would be it. So I think that the assessment should stop. I think it should come out of the general fund. You know, I live in Cadillac, my office is in Cadillac, we pay a lot of taxes to live in Cadillac compared to if we lived in the township and, you know, part of that reason we pay those taxes is to help the downtown, so I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add something else? I'd also like to add that last winter alone, our parking lot-
I have to come up to the podium, please.
I'd like to add that last winter alone, our, for parking lot maintenance at my parking lot, for snow removal and salting the parking lot, the bill was over $10,000. We're already $1,000 into it this year and it's not even winter yet, so those costs need to be considered as well, I believe.
Tell them to go old. I invited myself because of the parking lot situation also, and a curiosity question.
Could you please state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Tim Coffey. Who doesn't know me? Anyway, there are, John, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, 13 parking lots?
13 public parking lots.
13, and they hold about 900?
687.
Yeah. And I guess where I'm coming from is, I'm, I've going to have an assessment, okay, I understand that. What I don't understand is why it doesn't cover everything. I mean, it just covers the parking lots. It seems to me if you could close half of them in the winter, you'd knock half your snowmobile charges out of there. So that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda, and this evening we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on October 17th, along with the minutes from the closed session that was also held on October 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to a couple of, or one communication that we have this evening, Sandy?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the signed request from Friends of the Library as presented and authorize staff to approve changes in dates if requested.
I'll make a motion to approve the signed request from Friends of the Library as presented and authorize staff to approve changes in dates if requested.
I'll second that, too.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This evening we have a couple of appointments.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Lisa Swanson to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on November 21st, 2026.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Lisa Swanson to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on November 21st, 2026.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the appointment of Mary Jo O'Hagan to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on November 21st, 2024.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Mary Jo O'Hagan to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on November 21st, 2024.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And I'd also like to note that Mary Jo is new to the Board of Review and it's always nice to see new volunteers coming forward to serve on our boards because we, because we can't do it without them. And that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Under tonight's city manager's report, we are bringing back for further council discussion and consideration, snowmobile trailouts within the city of Cadillac. Just very briefly, city council did tackle this on a couple of occasions, late last winter, early spring, and in summary, at a sort of policy level, council said that ultimately this was something that you wanted to perhaps get involved in in creating these, these trails, but for you wanted us to come back once we were able to provide a little bit more detail on the routes after it went through engineering, as well as with what the estimated costs for the routes, for what the routes are. The communication and information in the packet is very similar to what you would have seen in the past, what you are seeing now, at least in this public forum for the first time, are the routes with the estimated costs associated with them. John Wallace is going to just very briefly walk, walk you guys through, I think there's a total of six slides as to those routes and their costs. The only thing I want to just mention, sort of as a, as a backdrop behind this, is that at least with regard to one of the routes, that being the one off of Sunnyside that's parallel with the White Pine Trail, you know, that would require a state-level permitting process if that was one that you guys wished to move forward with both the DNR and likely MDOT, and obviously outside of our own local agency, even if the city of Cadillac makes the policy decision to move it forward, we don't necessarily have any control in terms of what the next board outside of this, you know, outside of the city might do with it. But without any further ado, John, if you wouldn't mind just walking council briefly through the six slides with the updates in terms of the costs, that would be awesome. And regarding where we would find money for these things, we would look at reserves within our general fund and our ARPA reserves as well, as very likely sources to fund any or, any and/or all of these potential routes.
Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, city council. Just wanted to back up a little bit to reorient you to where we've been in the past. In the previous time we looked at this, we talked about the routes being routes one, two, and three. Routes one was the long route that comes in from the city near South 41 Road, near the White Pine Trail, and pursued a ladder, a parallel pathway all the way up to Laurel Street. And then in previous versions, it actually extended up to the library location. You will see in the current package that now that Route One is ending on a lateral connection on Pollard Road to the Willow Mercantile business, so it's, it's no longer going further north into the downtown by the library. Route Two comes in from a point at the city dock and goes into the city park, and you'll see on the slides, when I get to those, that there's an option there, a short option and a longer option with different cost parameters. And then for Route Three, it comes in from a point at the boat launch and proceeds to the GND retail building, and you'll see with that route as well that there's an option for a shorter route or a longer route depending on what is desired. With that, the, the next four slides will, will be on Route One. As you can see, it comes in along Sunnyside where the White Pine Trail enters the city. You can see that there's various notes on there, and on your report size, you can see it indicates where clearing might be necessary, where grading might be necessary, and different cost issues that might be associated with doing that particular route. For this, to implement this entire Route One, the estimated cost was put at 110,000 from the engineer, engineering firm. Okay, now, this is a continuation of Route One. Again, it, this is a section that goes between Pearl and just beyond Marble Street. Again, it directly parallels the White Pine Trail, is just offset from the White Pine Trail. This is the section that continues on up to Pollard Street. And this particular segment is where you get into the, probably the most intensive clearing and grading that is needed for the route, just because of the forest cover that is, is in this section of the trail. And this would be the final section of Route One. Again, the westernmost portion of this section, again, would also require a certain amount of clearing on the very west end as a continuation of the previous section, again, because of the forest cover. You'll notice in all these options, Route One through Route Three, that you'll see notes too where in some cases there's a special snowmobile crossing material that needs to be applied to pavement areas, and that special material is there because of the degree to which the snowmobiles could damage or tear up the pavement in those areas. And with that final ending of Route One going into the mercantile, of course, there would be some kind of parking agreement needed where that trail enters onto the private property. Moving from that, we can go into Route Two. Route Two has two options. It comes in at the, at the, at the dock in the downtown area, and option one, just is a simple matter of creating a parking corral near the docks and for a cost of 3,500 for fencing and signing, that option could be implemented. A little bit longer version brings the snowmobiles actually into city park and at the northwest edge of the city park, there would be a parking corral. In this case, the cost rises to 31,500. Again, the special crossing material is what's at work there in terms of raising that cost at 26,000. Then you also have the fencing and signing, fencing at 3,500, signing at 2,000, and brings the total to 31,500. And as in with Route Two, Route Three, it again has two options. That option brings a pathway off the boat launch, and again, you can establish a parking corral with fencing and signing for 3,500. The option, second option would be to take it from the boat launch, bring it from an eastward direction to the Chamber of Commerce, and then in kind of a northwest direction up to the first alley behind the dental office that's on the corner there and bring it down that alley. This particular option would be a total of 69,000. The signing would be 4,000. And again, it's when you get into situations where you have to apply the snowmobile crossing material, that you get into the higher expense, which in this case was 65,000. So the longer option for Route Three would be 69,000. The shorter option would be 3,500. So a pretty big difference between the short and the long options on routes two and three, and there is only the one cost figure on Route One. And so that's, that's basically the synopsis of, of what was prepared by our engineering firm on this.
Additional bogey, just to throw out there regarding permitting, and I mentioned the state, but also the railroad, too. Our engineering firm is working with, or was working with another northern Michigan community, creating snowmobile paths and have some experience working with the railroad, and they do require various permitting and other things along with that when you go across the tracks. So it's not, it's not a total encumbrance where it would necessarily stop us in, in our tracks, no pun intended, but it just is another, you know, another variable out there that we would, you know, have to work through, so. But we did our best to try to, you know, create, you know, feasible options from the pathways that city council, you know, back, you know, a few months ago said, all right, here's, here's the direction we'd like you to further consider, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open it for discussion.
Now that we've got this information back, what is our next step? And I'm asking that question-
Sure.
-in relation, like Route One and Two, are we approving the routes themselves that before any work would be, would be done, we'd still have to look at the costs and whether we approved the costs or not?
Well, we're at that step now.
Okay.
So at your meeting late, you know, late winter, early spring, we wanted to understand the policy question of whether snowmobiles, you know, snowmobile routes in the city was something you were interested in and having us pursue and explore. The answer to that question was yes, and here generally are sort of the routes that we think would be good, we've got feedback from the businesses, you know, how can we try to get them in? So we took that and extrapolated that into this and now have some numbers associated with it. City council wanted, you know, before you kind of gave us the blank check just to do it, said, do the, you know, do the gut check with us again, bring it back, have these numbers. You're not under any pressure to sign on the dotted line today necessarily, you're back in two weeks again. If you want to take this and sort of digest it and bring it back for further conversation, you're more than welcome to do that. But this is what can feasibly be done, assuming all the permitting gets approved. These are what, you know, both public works, engineering, and community development- what, um, you know, both Public Works Engineering and Community Development have come back with as the most viable way of, of making it work. You know, one of the things that we must remember is that, as basically a, a, a micropolitian, you know, a small urban center that Cadillac, that the city is, you know, we, we plow our streets, we salt our streets, you know, we maintain the sidewalks, uh, you know, to the extent that we help out opening them up during the winter. You know, so, uh, unlike in some other more rural areas where you'll find snowmobiles, you know, on the sides of the roadways, they don't, they don't do the curb-to-curb treatment that we do. So, just another thing to chew on as to why our routes, you know, look the way that they do. It's, it's really keeping them off, off the streets-
Okay.
...and only doing it minimally.
I'd really like to hear from the members of the council, now that we see what the numbers are and the impact on the environment that this is going to have. What are your thoughts?
Well, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. The hundred-and-ten thousand, all these numbers we have to remember are just estimates. I mean, we really don't know the final cost. And estimates tend to be low, so you can count on more. And John, I wanted to ask you, the fencing you've got, is that seasonal or is it permanent? You just have fencing as part of it?
Go up to the mic, John.
I, I think that would be seasonal fencing.
Right, so we have to have employees from the street department put it up in the fall and take it down in the spring.
I would think so, but I could confirm that with the engineer.
And if damaged, we, that'll be replaced. So that's an ongoing bill.
Yes. These figures are not just once.
Right. Plus the, are you finished?
What?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Plus, this is just the initial cost. The cost of repair and maintenance on these is, it would be ongoing. Um, also, as I look, especially at Route One, at the extensive, um, clearing that's cutting down trees, which would provide a bear, a sound barrier, um, and using, using streets where people live, um, and stop paving, or stop clearing their streets so that snowmobiles can come on. I know, I was not here the day that we, um, thought, we decided that to go ahead with this. I would have spoken up against this initially, um, for a number of reasons. Um, the cost is one, the ongoing cost is another. Um, the, the noise that it brings into the city is, um, you know, we were talking about, we, a big kerfuffle this spring with a, a noise ordinance. And now we're wanting to bring, um, much louder machines, even if they're going slowly, you know, uh, they're still, um, louder. I also heard from some folks saying that, um, that, uh, I live over by Diggins Hill, and every year there are some that are, when the kids are sledding, there are sleds that are going up, you know, snowmobiles that are up on Diggins Hill. And if it looks like it's okay to come in the city, it's guaranteed that people are going to think it's okay to come in the city. Folks are not going to say, "Oh, only here", you know? It, it's, so it's going to create a big kerfuffle. And I just, you know, um, even if we have the money to do this, I also listen to Mr. Blackmore. I mean, good grief, we have, uh, snowmobiles coming and using the businesses in Cadillac West. And, um, and I got to tell you that the, our, people come in to town, um, stay at the hotels outside of downtown, their sleds are on trailers, and they come in and use all the bus, all the downtown businesses. They come and eat here. They're not driving their snowmobiles here. Um, and they're still coming and using these businesses. I think that, um, I think this is, uh, that the, the cost benefit is just not-
I like it.
-it's sufficient. It's just, I think this is a bad idea. If we have some money to spend, I would love to see it go to Cadillac West and, um, and help with, you know, with the, with the snowmobile trails and the business, the damage to businesses out there, um, from snowmobiles. And it's just my thoughts.
I think it's, one more, a real balancing act. I mean, the city wants to help their businesses survive and, and grow. At the same time, would you want the snowmobiles going in your front yard? You know, and that noise? And saying, "So I've lived here most of my life, we've already been through this. We've already gotten rid of the snowmobiles from town because of the noise." And they, they just didn't follow rules at that time. Not saying they won't now, but it's that balancing act. We do want to help the businesses, but we got to think of the people, taxpayers.
Thank you. We can help with a shuttle.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really happy that we had this priced out. I mean, it was a good idea that deserved serious thought. When, um, members of our business community are approaching us, asking, uh, about something, I think it's our responsibility to consider it. And I don't think we were able to consider it without these dollar values, but I agree with both of you too on, you know, numerous things that you guys said. So I, I mean, I don't support either three of these routes, um, at this point, so...
Agreed.
I think it's important to keep it open mind. At this time, I agree, it's not viable with the numbers that we're seeing. But as grants become available, because other options become available, then we keep the, the conversation going.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, if we're looking at, you know, these kinds of funds, we've, we've tried to be really good stewards of our resources. And I don't, I don't see this as doing that. And, you know, the next thing on our agenda, it, to me, if we're going to make a difference and make an impact that's going to touch the most amount of people in our community, then we should be thinking in that area. So would, someone like to entertain a motion?
I don't know what the motion would be.
Um, frankly, the motion, you know, could be to take no action. Yeah.
So-
Keep it for, in the file. A lot of the work's been done, so...
So I'll move to that we take no action at this time.
I'll second it.
Okay.
House Member Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alaba?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
And also appreciating the amount of work that John has put into this and the engineers and everybody that-
Yep.
-that appreciate, very much appreciated. And thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Mayor, members of the council, you know, it's nece- not necessarily for ways, you know? If there's ever an opportunity to bring it back for some reason, a lot of the legwork's been done, the routes have been established, you have, yeah, so... Okay, um, under adoption, ordinances, and resolutions, um, the next item is with respect to the public parking lot assessment. Uh, I'll just provide, uh, somewhat of a recap and then give it back to City Council to, uh, to discuss and chew on. Uh, long story short, uh, at the last City Council meeting, uh, no action ultimately was taken regarding the assessment. Uh, the way of, uh, of how the timing works, uh, if this was to be on the December tax roll, uh, excuse me, uh, tax bills that go out, we would need to have action taken today in order to make the timeline for, for getting the tax roll updated into the system. And if you guys have any desire to know more about that, you can ask the Finance Director who's here. Uh, but basically, it has to be done, uh, now in order to make the, the iss- the, the timing for the issuance of the bills. Uh, subsequent to the last City Council meeting, uh, members from the Downtown Development Authority slash Business Improvement District, uh, collaborated with the resources from the chamber, and they held a public forum, uh, where they invited, um, all of the, the core, uh, folks that are a part of the assessment area to come if they wished to hear more about it, try to get a better understanding as to what it's about. Uh, this has been in place for about three decades, uh, and, you know, hence the word "special." Perhaps it's not so special anymore, uh, but it is a, a legal, uh, vehicle or tool that, uh, our city's been using as a way of, of essentially coming up with the difference for funding the operational maintenance costs, both winter maintenance and non-winter maintenance for the lots. The costs estimate, just using round numbers, are approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. And as it's currently scripted, uh, the general fund contributes about thirty-five or thirty-six percent. So where do we go from here? Uh, City Council has a lot of options. Um, you know, one option is you approve it as it was recommended at your last meeting. Another option is you don't, and you modify it. You might say, "Well, how do we modify it?" You can modify it in any number of ways. One way potentially could be that you change the ratio, instead of it essentially being, you know, um, uh, a, a split where the general fund is putting in approximately thirty-five percent. You make it a fifty-fifty split. What does that do? Well, that'll adjust the roll altogether and, and lower, um, uh, lower it accordingly. Um, you know, you can direct us to remand it back, uh, to, uh, the DDA slash BID for further analysis and thought. Uh, that would result, though, in it not being a part of the, uh, December tax bills, which then, of course, as a domino effect would go down, would result in the city's general fund having to pick up whatever those, um, uh, those costs are, uh, presumably for this winter or for this year, uh, before it then comes back again. Um, you know, you can really make any policy, uh, level, uh, decision that you wish. And so I will shut up and kick it back to you guys to, to, uh, recommence the conversation started last month.
Okay.
If, uh, I could start it knowing, Pierce.
Go ahead.
I, I think, and I'll reiterate my comments from the last meeting, I think especially in the environment that we're in, our businesses need all the help they can get. In nineteen-ninety-five until now, to have this tax carried on the backs of the businesses is too long. I think we need to figure out a, a change. Uh, and I think we're also at a unique time that we have. It should be budgeted into the, uh, general, uh, fund. All taxpayers benefit from our businesses being downtown and making that part of our, uh, budget. And we have the ARPA funds available that can be used, uh, initially if we've got to go back, uh, to figure out another solution. My other concern is, I was glad we had a, a town meeting, that this was one of the subjects, but it, it happened too quickly for businesses really to be able to get involved and have a say and be part of the conversation. And I really think if we do need to go and figure out another solution, we need to take the time, uh, to talk, uh, to the businesses, to talk to the community. Uh, 'cause it, this is critical infrastructure and it needs to be taken care of, but I think it's the burden on, uh, all the taxpayers. I would note that for those business owners that live and have a business and, and Cadillac, they're paying twice. They're paying under the general taxes and other, under the assessment. So I, I really believe now is the time not to renew this, uh, and give that break we can give after a thirty-year period.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, the break we're talking about, I believe, is three-hundred thousand dollars over the course of the five, five years, which was the, um, portion that the downtown businesses were going to be responsible for. Um, and I think the same thing that, you know, I, I have, I have a different office in a different downtown, you know, um, they, they incorporate into the general fund. Um, I think that's the way we should start doing things. And I think it comes at a nice time where it will hopefully help to, um, I don't know, uh, head off any of the negative impacts if we go into recession. Um, you know, we've, we've been building our downtown up and we've been building a lot of momentum. And I think this is another, uh, good thing, um, to continue that, uh, mission. So I, I support eliminating it, um, entirely.
I was leaning on like a, like a split because I know that, first of all, I was surprised that businesses that have their own parking lots are assessed for the downtown parking lots. Um, that, that surprised me. Um, but I also know that, like, when, um, when the Lofts was built and when other places were built, they had to provide, like even, you know, developing Loom, for example, they had to make sure that they had a certain number of parking spaces available for their business based on their business, and they maintained their own parking lots. So businesses that don't have to have that, that are in the downtown, um, I think that there could be, I don't know, some kind of, of compromise. I was, I was going to, especially in, my thought would be to, this year, to eliminate it. And then do a, a, a much different split, like flip it instead of the city paying thirty-five, is flip it the other way in, um, in, um, coming years. Um, so that it, it, the, it's important that the lots are maintained. Um, we don't know, I don't know. I just, that, that was going to be my thought. And then, looking at, you know, just eliminating it and absorbing it into the budget. Right now, we have ARPA funds. We're not going to have ARPA funds five years from now. And to, then all of a sudden, um, you know, it's like when we talked about the, the water rates, how important it is to have them gradually raised so that we didn't end up like what happened out at Cherry Grove, when all of a sudden they jumped through the roof to get, to go to where they were. So I'm wondering if there isn't, um, a formula that is not oppressive to the business owners. Uh, maybe this year is a break and next year it's a different percentage, so that they are paying something.
If it helps with council's conversation, John or Owen could read the formula. It actually does discount.
Let's keep the discussion going.
Okay.
Yeah, just the council, please. Okay.
I like that idea. Give them a break this year and reassess next year. Gives us time to come up with something.
Well, that gives time. If we eliminate this, because this is a, a special assessment, so we're eliminating it for the next five-year period, that doesn't mean that staff then doesn't go out and talk to the businesses and see what options are and see what we need to do. And to budget it, so we see where it falls in our budget. But it, but I do think that the comment on special assessment, that this project is overdue to be ended or terminated. And the adverse effect on a business-making decision, either to come to our downtown when we do have vacancies, or for example, with the theater, uh, with Raven, with Horizon Books, uh, two of those businesses have said this, this would kill them, and this would cause them to go out of town, and they've already looked at, at leaving. Now's the time-
Right.
...to end this one.
Well, you know, when this was first brought up at our last council meeting, I wasn't, I wasn't at all ready to, you know, really define what is, what is it going to look like? You know, if, if we stop doing what we're doing today, what is it going to look like? But as part of, um, fact-finding, um, I asked Marcus and the staff to pull historical information on this assessment over the thirty-year period of time. What did those discussions look like? How did people support it or reject it? And to just get a really good, um, understanding. And it seems like, ever since this was put in place, for whatever good reasons that they did it and they took out the parking meters, it's been a bone of contention. And so, you know, when I was reading through, uh, the minutes and, and some of the findings of the, the parking committee, um, there was a document that was signed by a lot of the business owners downtown. And they made this statement, and it says, "We're calling upon you to modify this parking assessment, to compose and make a developmental contribution into the parking system, using the same aggressive leadership with which you sought to develop the industrial park and other City of Cadillac projects." And we are really good as a city when we are looking at new developments and buildings and whatnot. And I believe that that, when I read that statement, it really spoke to me, that we need to put those same kind of energies into this parking thing downtown and take it off the backs of our businesses. And we have to have something in place. I don't know what that is, you know? But other, others have to share in that cost. And so I really feel strongly, as all of you do, about not renewing it at this time. And then going back and starting discussions of what does it look like moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I can go ahead and make the motion not to renew the parking assessment as proposed.
I'll second it.
House Member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alaba?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. May I move to the next?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, uh, the next, uh, three items are all related to each other, uh, in one way, shape, or form. Uh, a recommendation, uh, from the Planning Commission, uh, is the first one regarding, uh, updating the zoning, uh, regarding the marijuana, uh, spatial separation between facilities, between retail facilities. Uh, the, uh, distance, um, in the pack, it was actually the original distance that was presented to the Planning Commission. They updated it, uh, and the, uh, updated information is printed out and in front of you. And I'm looking for the number off the top of my head. I believe it's-
Twenty-two eighty-four.
Thank you. Uh, uh, setting up, uh, two-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-four feet, uh, between, um, retail establishments. And, uh, this, uh, framework and this foundation, uh, would essentially set up the framework so that if council then also sets the public hearings and considers in a favorable way adjusting the licensing for retail facilities, that you would not see an inf- adjusting the licensing for retail facilities, that you would not see an influx of many more potential shops, but rather you would be providing the ability for, A, for there to be at least one shop on the west end of town, and, two, you'd be providing the ability for your current licensed shops to also receive reciprocal licenses. So as a, for instance, those shops that have medical licenses could receive an adult-use license, and those shops that have adult-use licenses can receive a medical license. But notwithstanding the licensing piece, the zoning piece still establishes the framework where it puts in that spatial separation. And this evening, all we're asking council to do is set the public hearings according.
I know we're not doing the presentation until the public hearing, and I didn't get a chance to watch the Planning Commission, but do we have bubble maps, maps with the bubbles drawn around our current shops? Is that, where is that, two thousand and two? I just wanted to...
Well, where they could go is a combination of looking at allowable zoning districts plus the spatial separation. And I know we had maps that we created when we first adopted the original legislation, but we have not gone back and created additional maps, which I'd be happy to do for the next meeting, showing the current spatial separation of the existing shops and re-highlight what zoning districts are eligible for such uses.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend the City of Cadillac zoning ordinance to impose minimum distance between certain marijuana businesses and to set a public hearing for December fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section ten dash two of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishments and to set a public hearing for December fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
You know, I'll support that. The one comment I thought that's good for the public to know is that, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, this helps the city in making the process for what is allowed much more objective and takes it out of that subjective application piece, which I think makes it more...
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so I support that motion. Councilmember Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section ten dash three of the Cadillac City Code relating to medical marijuana facilities and to set a public hearing for December fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening in our packet, we do have minutes and reports from the Downtown Development Authority that we can review at our leisure. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening. Rules the same as the first.
Maybe I should have went before, but I don't think I would have changed your decision. Miranda Grunow, I am the co-chair for the Downtown Development Authority and also Realtor at City to Shore. And I will sign in, but I'm going to take my time to talk first. We had done the parking assessment, as you guys know. I was not on that parking committee, and I'm not saying that it was the best answer, but it was an answer that we had right now, which is not always a good answer. We did the public forum on the DDA, and it was well-attended, and I see that there are more businesses here tonight, which is awesome. So we'd like to keep continuing that into the future and give you guys more notice on that, as well as businesses. We're trying to share it on social media, through the chamber, through word of mouth, and all of that to try to get the downtown businesses more involved and the community as well to come and give some input at those because we can't really fix something that we don't know is going on. So trying to give that a little bit of a buffer and to be able to present stuff to you guys in the future, which is what we were doing with the parking assessment, as that obviously was a hot topic for a lot of people. So we kind of went on to that. With our survey, we also did a survey with that. So we sent that out, shared it on Facebook. The chamber did the city page as well as personal pages as well. A lot of what we were coming back with, I don't think was necessarily in correlation with the parking assessment, although it is definitely could be a hardship on our businesses, as we know. What we kind of came back with was pedestrian safety is a huge thing, and I can share the survey with you guys anytime that you would want. But that was definitely the number-one thing, and then downtown events were the most answered ones as well. However, downtown sidewalks, traffic on Mitchell Street came in, which kind of goes with the safety. So there's a big focus on there, as we've heard from public comments throughout different things. The parking assessment came in as that was the last concern, but I think it was a good snowball thing that people came and talked about. So we do know kind of a direction to go, and I think that looking at the parking assessment and how you guys decided to tonight is a great idea. And with knowing that we may have some money in the general fund, if we can find something to do with that, to kind of focus on the safety and continue the public forums so that they can keep voicing their opinions. So thank you, guys. I'm just doing my number if somebody else wants to come up.
You're okay.
Oh, and one other thing that I quick wanted to say was that about thirty of the eighty-seven listed businesses did go down from what they were paying in twenty-twenty-one. So...
Good evening, again, council. Randy Lindell. Hey, for the businesses downtown and that, like this gentleman stated, he's already kicked out a thousand dollars for snow removal and that. And here we are, you know, middle of November. I believe the City of Cadillac, for the citizens, should make it an important priority to make the snow removal of the snow on the sidewalks throughout the town, not just special designated areas. I understand Main Street, but Cadillac, we need to make a walkable community during the wintertime. I know it's been pretty tough right now. And as a matter of fact, I do have pictures. I was gone, I had my driveway, everything all plowed, sidewalks. I'll show it to you next meeting. Ask permission. I came, had it all plowed out, everything. And then four days later, the city comes by and I'm all plowed back in again, you know. But we really appreciate it. Snow, walkable community, Maple Street, I got pictures on my Maple Street. I got some rental houses, and I've been trying for a couple of years now, and I'm almost, but I still got tremendous potholes in there that I got pictures of here that have not been taken care of. Again, another important thing is that there's a gentleman back here that we should really, you know, we really helped the downtown businesses, but this gentleman needs help out there in Cadillac West, and I'm all in favor and support of this gentleman and all his efforts and how the beautification of Cadillac West has become. And then, of course, et cetera. Oh, Cooley School has just made a resolution to sell their property for a hundred K to developers, and now that's going to bring more traffic in, et cetera. They want to build houses, that property. I played there on the playground with my cousins as a kid in the basketball courts. Now the architect and contractor wants to build houses, apartments, and what is that going to bring? More people, more people all the time. So as a resolution, so, and that's going to be coming forward to council shortly, and that's going to be important. And, you know, just like what we had on the agenda tonight, et cetera, et cetera. But hey, we got to keep the city plowed. And another thing, real quick, you know, we're paying taxes to control the weeds out on Lake Cadillac. I know, I'm going to go fishing, hoping, ice fishing, but hey, it's been a losing battle so far, and we've still been paying taxes on that for a long time, et cetera. And then, you know, with the Main Street and all the businesses, you know, there's a quote in there, you know, the most drastic strategy could be to buy Mitchell Street from, and, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Lindell.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, council, and Mr. King for your leadership on the council. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I got to follow him again. You won't see me again. This is the first time I've ever done this. I was very shocked when I read the paper, as I said, in my first month. I don't know why you can't open roads. I never thought you guys were going to put trails in by bringing snowmobiles. To get to Willows, for instance, from the lake, two roads. Up the Family Fair, take a right, you're down there. To GND, one road, you're at GND. I don't know why you can't relook at the snowmobile thing. And, you know, you know, you're going to get just as much damage. You guys are really overthinking it, in my opinion, because you would never but any thought of the Cadillac West. You know what we have to deal with. And I think if you open up two roads, you're going to accomplish the exact thing what you guys are trying to spend all the money on.
Thank you.
Jason Towers on the Willow that we've been talking about. I'm glad we put the numbers to it. It does seem like it's expensive, but I like where John's at, where maybe we start cheap and see how things go, see if there is a benefit to having snowmobiles in town. Or if it goes bad, then we don't spend two hundred thousand dollars to find that out. I do see some value in festivals and things that might come back if we make a more approachable town for snowmobilers, and that could be income for businesses. And also, in Mike's case, if there is damage out there and it's in the city limits, let's look at that. Let's talk about it and help them out out there. Definitely. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Barnes. I just want to say, one from a perspective of the DDA and one from the perspective of a business owner and resident of Cadillac. So first of all, I'm glad that there is so much enthusiasm and excitement for downtown because that's great. One of my concerns is that downtown infrastructure has been neglected for a very long time to the tune of going on thirty years. Sidewalks are crumbling. Safety, you know, access is of huge concern. And one thing that I think that this parking assessment has really done is kind of opened the floodgates a little bit to that conversation. So, you know, our DDA forum, you know, kind of got a little spin as it being about parking, and that was only a small part of it. We had actually planned on doing that before the parking assessment even became a hot topic. It just kind of went in there. Interestingly, the parking assessment was discussed, it was a small part of the conversation. The main part of the conversation was people not wanting to park downtown, not wanting to shop downtown because they get their mirrors ripped off, or they can't walk down the sidewalk without tripping on huge gaps in the sidewalk or uneven concrete, holes in the concrete, weeds growing up. So there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. My one concern with the parking assessment, I think, I've said it before, I'll say it again, as a business owner, I'm not opposed to paying my fair share of snow removal and stuff like that. You know, having parking is something that we all need to do as a business. I do have concern about where the funds might come from, from some of these other things, like Ms. Mayor, when you said, you know, you're talking about the long term. That concerns me as a business. So I hope this conversation continues because I don't think that just knocking it down is going to solve it long-term. I think there needs to be continued conversation and really look at, you know, what's going to happen two years, five years, ten years down the road. If we want to continue growing, how are we going to accomplish that and still pay for everything that needs to be paid for? Because a lot, we're kind of in a hole, and we need to look at what that looks like and how we start digging out of it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order if anyone has anything.
Mayor, just a quick announcement. Tree lighting for Friday. I believe it's scheduled for five-thirty. Willow will be there. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there. They'll be caroling there. Slight adjustment this year is that the stage for Santa will actually be where we have traditionally had the ice rink. It's going to work out well for us, especially with the early snowstorm that we received and the limiting amount of time that Public Works has had. Not only will we be able to accommodate the different location for the stage, but it will also allow us to not have to stop with the citywide cleanup to put up the ice rink. We'll do that next week. So you'll see a slightly different lay of the land, but five-thirty on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a moment to thank everybody who gave input into all the issues. We only can do what business owners and citizens need if there's a conversation going, and the challenge for us to make sure the information's getting out there before decisions are being made. So there's input. And the one other thing that I'm going to ask you, Marcus, because I just thought about it, thought the business about, does it ever make sense to move the Christmas tree to where the water park section is in the winter so that the parking lots can stay connected?
Too heavy.
Oh, it's too heavy. I figured there was a good reason.
The structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the plaza?
The what?
The other side of the fireplace.
Yeah.
Plaza. It's too heavy for there, too?
Where the ice rink is?
Ice rink doesn't really be good.
It's these sorts of things, though, that get us good conversation because I think it really affects businesses, the traffic.
I'm not opposed to that. We can try it this year and see if it just works out better.
I would need to find out from Public Works if it's feasible to do that this year.
And speaking of great ideas, I don't know if this is possible at all, but Christmas decorations in Cadillac West would be a nice idea.
It'd be a really nice idea.
I don't understand the logistics of what we're talking about really, but I think that is...
Right.
Would be nice.
And happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I'd like to echo Randy Lindell's comments about the ladies volleyball team at Cadillac High School. Congratulations. I'd like to thank Mr. Blackmore and Jason for coming and everybody that spoke. You can come back. You can come back. We welcome your input. That's how that works. I'll see you Saturday night at your concert at five-thirty. Thank you for that. I'm dead set against more than two marijuana stores in Cadillac. I was surprised when conservative Tom put in two. So then it'll be three, and I know it'll be four, and I don't want that. Regardless of footage between the stores, et cetera, two is enough.
I think the Planning Commission, by putting it at two thousand and whatever feet, there's only room for a third one out in Cadillac West. No more can go downtown.
No more at the Secretary of State?
Nope.
Allegra?
Nope.
Well, ah, ah, got you there.
Those four, those four facilities, but outside of the four that have already been approved.
No, you did get me.
There you go. We're going to end up with, in case you people didn't realize, we're going to end up with four. So...
Well, we did grant four licenses in the beginning.
Yeah, well, let them have medical. So anyway, that's where I stand on that, for whatever that's worth.
And that's why we will have a hearing next month.
Everybody come.
We'll talk about it then. So thank you very much, and we'll go ahead, Natjer.